...to the land of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Appeals and Equalization. Would the county like to say something first?
So my name is John Springer. I'm the residential appraiser in Wake Park. We got Don Ramler here and Nate fourteen? Sorry, and Nate as well. Tonight, we are doing the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting. So the purpose of the board is to provide a fair and objective forum for property owners to appeal their valuation or classification. The local board often serves as the first formal step in the appeals process for taxpayers. One of the most important duties placed by law upon the governing body of a township, city, or county is to serve as the Board of Appeal and Equalization. Effective actions taken by the board may potentially make a contribution to attaining assessment equality. The goal of the board should be to attempt to address property owners' issues efficiently, fairly, and objectively. Always keep in mind that any changes made by the board must be substantiated by facts. Any value reductions must be justified because they have the effect of shifting the tax burden to other property in that jurisdiction. Further, any changes made by the board must meet statutory guidelines. So I will just go over the memo that I sent out to Shauna, so I'm hoping you guys all got it. But it's just kind of what we saw in Wake Park this year.
No.
Uh-uh, we don't have it.
You don't have it?
I don't have, no, I'm sorry. If I, if you gave me something, I didn't, I don't recall seeing it. I apologize, but. You want us to make some copies?
Or put it on his, put it on the screen.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You make copies and I'll put the other one on the screen.
And then I did send out a sales book in, or it was put on the extranet site. So I'm assuming you guys don't have it, but we had basically eighty-four residential sales that we put in there. Those were the sales used in our study from October twenty twenty through September of twenty twenty-one. The sales resulted in a median ratio of about seventy-eight point six percent. Our statute were supposed to be between ninety and a hundred and five percent, so we were quite low this year. That was pretty much throughout the county. But the sales ratio is calculated by taking the estimated market value divided by the sale price and then adjusting it forward to the assessment date of January second, twenty twenty-two. We also, this year, put out a new sales layer. It was to provide a resource for, for property owners if they wanted to see any sales that were out there, see what things were selling for. So the, the city, we saw a total value just under a billion dollars, nine hundred and ninety-eight million, which was up about eight percent from last year's assessment. The amount includes the new construction where there was about two million seventy-one thousand in residential new construction. And majority of that came from five new homes, one was a partial for this year, two garages, and eleven more significant interior remodels. On the commercial side, we had about three point seven five million in new construction. And then for averages that we saw in increases, residential, just all of residential, basically saw about fifteen to twenty-five percent was majority of them. Patio homes, about fifteen to twenty percent. Agricultural, eight to twelve percent, and most of that was due to land. We went up about ten percent throughout the whole county in our land values. Commercial, zero to two percent increases, apartments, six to ten percent, and industrial was two to four percent. This is just averages. Obviously, there's going to be pockets where some went up more than that, some went up not quite as much as that. And then for my quintile this year, the one-fifth of the city that I visited, I basically did the whole outskirts on the southern side, the farmland. And I guess we call them the suburbs of Wake Park. But that is pretty much what I have as far as what Wake Park saw last year.
All right. Then we'll take, I think we'll take public input. Anybody wants to, whoever wants to be first? Need your name and address, please.
Sure, up here?
Yep.
Okay.
Jeff Moline, eight-two-eight Sunwood Park Drive.
Do you happen to have your parcel number?
Yeah, I do. Sorry, yes, I do. Nine eight point six zero eight six six point zero zero two four. My property value went up this year by twenty-seven percent, according to the taxable market, market value. And my question is, one, that seems like high. Compared to the houses real close to me that have sold recently, their values didn't go up by that much actually selling. At least from what I've been able to get off of the old internet. Also, I'm not capable of seeing through the website, I'm not capable of seeing what their property taxes went up, their taxable market values on these properties. But in years past, going to last year, just for example, my house's property, taxable property value was two hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred. I've got a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two thousand square feet. I did a shotgun of the neighborhood where I live, houses real close to me and some within a block either side. And I've got a range of houses from nineteen-hundred-and-three square feet to three thousand and forty-seven square feet that were all taxable market value less than mine. The lowest one is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred. That's nineteen-hundred-and-thirty-one square feet for a three-bedroom, two-bath. My house is two thousand fifteen square feet. A hundred square feet for sixty-two thousand dollars, sixty-one thousand dollars. That seems, I've always been leery of speaking in the past at these things, but that, because I don't want to see their taxes go up. I don't want to see that kind of a range happen. But that seems like a huge difference for what I'm getting hit with if this is supposed to be fair and equitable.
Were you on the twenty-three payable valuations?
I can see twenty-two's payable is taxable market value off of, off of the Stearns County website. I was not able to see twenty-three's market values.
So what you're comparing is last year's value?
I'm comparing last year's value to last year's value.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yes, sir.
What, what I'm seeing is, I guess I pulled up and had about eight, nine sales that I see in your neighborhood that we would have used to help value yours. And we do, our goal is when we go to inspect properties is to equalize. So we'll measure it up, make sure our square footages are correct, because that's one of the biggest driving factors. And then we look at qualities and style of home. So the houses might not be comparable, or the sale prices might not look, you know, they're lower. I, I do see they are all lower, but we are looking at our valuation from the twenty-twenty-one assessment for the twenty-twenty-two taxes, what our value is compared to what they sold for. So I'm showing, you know, anywhere from about high seventies, seventy-seven, up to ninety percent. We're looking at a median ratio, so I would assume it would be closer to eighty percent is what the median was showing. As for the, the value of the houses, the, the whole neighborhood was about twenty-three percent increase. And we're looking at the estimated market value, so taxable market value might have went up about twenty-seven percent. All the houses around are about twenty-three percent in the estimated market value increase, so.
And you're at twenty-three point six, Jeff.
Okay.
Market value.
Okay, when I did, when I did the taxable market value.
Estimated market value is what we do.
Okay.
Taxable market value comes in after your homestead exclusion, and that can be different on, on different properties.
Okay.
So what you need to look at is the estimated market values.
Okay, okay.
And the, the one thing I did notice is just looking at the characteristics, we do have your house. We did have it a little bit bigger than what you were thinking it was, and I'm not sure what, when, the last time we went out, twenty-seventeen was our last inspection, so you'll probably be getting.
Do for another walk through?
A walk around this year.
Okay.
But we have twelve fifty for the square footage on the main level, and then two stories, so we're looking at about twenty-five hundred just there. Couple bump outs, but we got twenty-five hundred above grade.
Okay.
I haven't been there personally, but I will be there this year.
Okay.
So there's a little discrepancy there.
Okay. Okay, I'm just going off of what the Realtor had given us. So I'm assuming that they do a little bit of measuring too. But, so I did not run those numbers from the estimated market value. You said it was twenty-three percent?
Yours is twenty-three point six, and I believe John referenced that neighborhood as being in the.
At twenty-three percent for the neighborhood. Okay, okay.
You're right with everyone else. No changes were made to the property this last year. That's all the market and looking at that median ratio for the neighborhood.
Okay. Is there any kind of a factor taken into, taken into account, I don't want to eat up all the time here. Is there any kind of factor taken into account when it comes to the property itself because of the, the city has a, actually a setback in my, in my property where water and sewer goes through the back. They had to go around back when they put in that development because of the granite slab under my house. So water and sewer easement is, is there on both sides of my property as well.
I wouldn't have that information.
Yeah. Are you the only property that's affected by that?
I believe myself and Dennis and Lydia right next door in eight-twelve, I think it cuts through their property as well.
Who have you own the property?
We've been there since two thousand and twelve?
Wondering if the.
Two thousand and two, sorry, two thousand and two.
Market would support any kind of difference on your neighboring property that doesn't have that easement?
Okay, so that neighboring property's, well, their property value is two hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred for taxes as well. They have a three thousand square foot house. So there's this three thousand forty-seven, it's a patio home. I don't know if that makes a difference, but it's twenty thousand dollars, eighteen thousand dollars less than what mine is.
You took that off the county website, correct?
Yes, sir.
About twenty, twenty.
That was twenty-two, yes, sir.
Eight twenty-two, so that's last year's value.
Yes, sir, and that was taxable market value, not estimated market value.
No, what I'm trying to say is you're, you're comparing it to last, twenty-twenty-one's assessment.
Yes, sir.
So you're looking at your twenty-two assessment?
No, sir. My numbers are from twenty-twenty-one's assessment as well for my property. I'm not, I'm not doing bad math that way.
Okay, all right.
So I'm trying to compare, that, that was the only year that I could get all the information from, so that's why I tried to compare apples to apples. So are we stuck at this twenty-three percent and that's just the way it's going to be?
Well, we, we got you on the docket. The, the board will vote. And I, I did see the voicemail you left me.
Okay, it was real rapid, yeah.
It was the timing of it.
Right.
I, I would recommend to the board that we don't make a change just because I haven't been to the property. We usually like to do a full inspection.
Okay.
See if we find difference in characteristics or anything.
Okay.
But we, we got you down and you can go to the county board if that's what they choose, but for now, yeah, we're, we're kind of stuck here.
Okay, I understand.
And then I would make the suggestion to the board that we vote on all of the appeals after the fact.
Just for the purpose of, some can, if you can try to just speak into the mic, I'm sorry, but it's, some have, there's some that have harder time hearing and it's easier that way. So that's why we use the mics mostly. Thank you.
And if I may, this is something else that people should know. Because your estimated market value went up twenty-three percent, it's not going to correlate to a tax increase of twenty-three percent. You need to understand that, because what's happened is the tax base in the city of Wake Park, if yours was the only property that saw an increase, then I would say, yeah, it's going to have the same kind of reflection on your property taxes. But because the entire city went up, all different property types, your tax base has grown that much more. Plus the new construction that was mentioned that's added to the tax base, that's all for payable taxes next year. So levies would have to increase basically at the same percentage as your estimated market value has increased in order for you to see the same type of reflection on your taxes. That's, that has never happened. I don't assume it's going to happen. I don't know if there's any major projects going on. I can tell you the county is going to be a very typical increase, probably in the four to five percent on their levy. The school district, there were no referendums passed, so we're not looking at anything on the, out of the ordinary on the school district side. And I'm not sure, we won't know, levies won't be set until November, early December. So we won't know the ramifications until at that point, November, early December. But I can guarantee you that a tax increase would not be reflective of your property value increase. On top of that, there are two different property tax refunds that are in place. You'll find them on the backside of your tax statement. Well, one is based on income. The second one is based on simply how much your taxes go up from one year to the next. So if it goes up more than twelve percent, this is what's in play right now. If it goes up more than twelve percent, you're entitled to a refund on that excess of over twelve percent. There's two bills being introduced in the legislature right now. One refers to that, and they're talking about, because this, this is happening across the state. And so the legislators are getting plenty of word about what's happening with residential values. That, the, the first bill that I know of is the one that changing it from anything over twelve percent to anything over ten percent. The second part, second bill that's being introduced is addressing the homestead exclusion. Homestead exclusion right now, in order to get the maximum, your value would have to be seventy-six thousand dollars. You, you can't find a home that's livable for seventy-six thousand dollars. So they're going to address that as well, and that'll be increased. I'm not sure where they'll end up on it, but that'll be increased. That's been in place for at least fifteen years. So they need to catch up to where the market is, with the median value home in the state of Minnesota is. I think that's how that was derived at the first time. So that's being introduced as a bill this year as well. So again, don't let your property tax increases in your mind think my taxes are going to go up twenty-three percent at this point. Because that just won't happen. Just some peace of mind. I was concerned myself. My property value went up twenty percent. But I know how the system works, and you don't have to look at that as being, that's what's going to happen to my taxes.
All right. Got any more questions for him? All right, Judd?
Hi there. Judd Zeller, twenty-eight thirty-one Meadow Lane.
Do you have your parcel number?
Yep. It is nine eight six zero five six eight zero three seven four. I just have some questions about our taxes this year, well, for twenty-twenty-two, four thousand seven hundred and forty-four. And then I have similar properties right around our area. One was, this is, and they're all ten-acre parcels, the same as ours. One was three thousand thirty-two, seventeen hundred dollars less. One was twenty-six fifty-six, that was two thousand less. And then there was another one that's kind of on the way to our place. It's twenty-four acres, a new big house, big shed. And they're actually nine hundred and twenty-two dollars less than our taxes. I don't, you know, for, in comparing, we have about a third wetland out front. The back half, not back half, back there, it's a lot of granite and, so it's not much for usable land. I was just kind of wondering how, and a lot of these are similar because they have swamp in either the back portions of theirs also. But it's wetland that they can never touch or use, and it's kind of the same as ours, the same acreage, same kind of, same houses, same size, footage, pretty much. I don't know exactly what they are, but we're quite a bit higher in tax compared to these surrounding houses, places.
So I, I do remember you combined the two parcels, and that's going to help you because the twenty-twenty-two taxes that you're paying on is still the value from last year when it was two separate parcels. So this year, looking at your value, it only increased like a couple thousand because now we're valuing it as one big parcel. So you'll see the, the impact of your combination there on next year's taxes. Because comparing to the neighbors now is, is just you were still being valued higher at two parcels. So that, that's going to be the difference there.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
See it more in line next year.
Okay, perfect. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Judd. Anyone else? Sir?
Terry Spears, thirty-eight Cherry Street North. Parcel number nine eight six zero seven five two zero 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 zero. And my, my comment is, is the tax assessor isn't a Realtor. And I don't see why you should increase the value of all the homes based on a few sales that they say that the housing market is so tight that hardly any homes are being sold. So what are you doing? You basing your increase on the few houses that are being sold? Now, the house next door to me sold for one seventy. They listed it for one fifty and the people offered twenty thousand more. So the few people that are desperate are going to make it worse for the rest of us. It doesn't seem fair that you're going to, across the board, just raise it twenty, twenty-five percent. Mine's twenty-six percent from this year to next. So you, you want to force people out of their homes, that you tax them out of their place to live?
So that, that, no, that is not the goal. Our, we, we have guidelines to follow from the Department of Revenue, and we just follow the market, and like you said, they, they spent twenty thousand dollars more than what it was listed for, but we saw that across the whole county.
Well, I moved in two years ago and there was about four empty homes all around me. And I assumed that a lot of that was the bank-owned properties. So did you reduce the taxes according to what the property values were when, when the bank was selling the properties at half price?
But we'll, we'll verify each sale with the, either the buyer or seller. And we have our study, but we'll get sales kicked out if they're not open market, arms-length transaction. A, a bank sale like that wouldn't be included in this study.
See, now the house next to me, they had a, a remodeled basement. Mine, mine's considered remodeled, but it's, it's plywood or paneling or whatever. They've got drywall, they've got forced air, I've got hot water heat, and the house hasn't been updated in probably forty years. So I don't see the comparison between the two.
And, and we.
I mean, you're basically pricing mine the same as that house next to me, and we're pretty much the same, except that his has been updated quite a bit. I mean, that's why a lot of these homes are selling for that much more money, because they've been updated.
Yeah, and, and we do have guidelines that if we see, you know, it's obviously been updated, we can't compare that value that we had previously on it to what we would change it to because of the updates. We, chances are, we've just never been in that house, or, you know, recently they updated it without permits or, or something to that nature. So we can't, can't use that sale in our study because the comparison isn't there. We, we'll, we'll use sales that are open market, arms-length, and.
Basically, you're throwing fuel on the fire, encouraging these homes to be selling for more than they should be selling. You know, they're already above market. I mean, it's common knowledge you're selling above market because people are desperate. And then you're saying, well, okay, since they're above market, we're going to raise the value on everything. So that just plays right into the Realtor saying, well, this house is worth this much more than it was last year, so, you know, jump on it.
And what we're doing, we're, we're just following the market, so we, we can't control what the.
But you're not Realtors, you know, you, you don't take into consideration the, the surrounding homes. You're, you're just looking at, well, these few homes sold for this much, so we need to raise everybody. That's not fair.
How many sales were there?
There was eighty-four in Wake Park.
In the city of Wake Park residential sales. Eighty-four? There were eighty-four sales in Wake Park residential sales. Buyers and sellers are the ones that set what the market value is. The assessor doesn't set what the market value is. We just follow what the market is telling us.
Okay, now, as far as the, you know, is there anything that we, we have to file if we disagree with this, or is this it?
It'll be recorded.
Yeah, you're on record.
All right.
So you'll, you'll get notification of the board's decision, and then you do need to attend this meeting in order to go to county board if you decide to go that route.
Okay. I mean, I've talked on the phone a little bit, and he explained earlier that, that the increase in the value doesn't translate to what you're actually going to pay as far as that much more in taxes. That it goes according to the budget for the, the city and the county and whatever. All right, thanks.
All right, thanks. Is there anyone else? Anyone else that would like to speak before the board? Anyone? I see we got one letter from Crossroads?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and you, you've agreed to that already at the way it looks, huh?
Yeah, I actually wasn't involved in that, Mr. Mayor, but.
No, I see, it didn't come from you, no.
No, it's, yeah, Jake Pitti, the county assessor, was in discussion with the representative, and they came across that agreement, and Jake asked me to ensure that with the board, his recommendation would be what's stated on that letter.
Right. Okay. All right.
Did we get our sales history this year?
No, he said.
I didn't.
There's like the sales book we sent out. So it's on the extranet site.
At the county's extranet? I mean, I don't think any of us are familiar with that.
No, no.
Okay.
Not familiar, no.
So it'll have those eighty-four.
I didn't know that, that's where they were. Yeah.
So, yeah, they'll, they'll be out there, and so all eighty-four sales and whatever commercial sales there were, I believe.
You want to send that link to us?
Yes, because I want to see it and.
I'll pull it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is there anything else, son?
I do have a, a recommendation for Jean Dokendorf. Two parcels, she's got four of them platted out there to our minimum value, but the two with the house and the garage on it. But the two with the house and the garage on it. The parcel numbers are ninety-eight-six-zero-six-six-five-point-zero-two-zero-zero. And then same number is just zero-two-zero-four. So for the two-hundred parcel, is the north parcel of hers with just the garage on it. The original value we sent out was two-hundred thousand, two-hundred. After I, I went and looked at our land on it, the land breakdown. After adjusting for more low land, wetland on there, my recommendation would be to lower it to one-eighty-four-nine-hundred. And that's the total value of the parcel, which would be a fifteen thousand, three-hundred dollar reduction. And then her parcel with her home on it, I also did the land adjustment, made, there was more wetland than we had. Original value was five-ninety-six-three-hundred. And I would be recommending a reduction to five-eighty-two-two-hundred, which is a reduction of fourteen thousand, one-hundred.
Have you talked to her?
Yep, I talked to her and I, I did get an email confirming that she agrees with the value.
Okay. All right, anything else? Who, what? Oh, Dennis. Anybody else here for Board of Equalization? All right, council, your wishes. We have one, two, three, five parcels, or five individuals, I guess.
So we can start with the Jean Dokendorf parcels, the one ending in two-hundred. My recommendation would be to lower the value to one-eighty-four-nine.
I move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, next one?
Next one is the one ending in two-oh-four. My recommendation would be to lower it to five-eighty-two-two-hundred.
So move.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next one?
This would be Jeff Molini, ninety-eight-sixty-eight-six-six-point-zero-zero-two-four. I recommend, my recommendation would be no change at this time.
All right.
Yeah, Kewitt, go ahead.
By doing that, you can still go to the County Board to review. That's, that's, that's the thing. Without coming here, you couldn't go to the county. Now you can go to the county.
And you can still work with him on that, correct?
I, yes. It would probably be me just because we didn't have discussion beforehand. So I would probably ask to take on that County Board.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's a smart way to do that, so. Maybe, I don't know if you have, I don't know if you have his number, otherwise he can give you his card.
Yep, he left me a voicemail this afternoon and that was.
All right.
Just the timing of it.
Okay.
So as of right now, the motion is no change.
No change.
So move.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next one?
Next one is Judd Zellner, and I don't know if he was, if you're really appealing, we'll get you on the docket, but, just the explanation. But the parcel number was ninety-eight-six-zero-five-six-eight-zero-three-seven-four. And it'd be the no change is my recommendation.
But the value on that particular property would be going down?
Next year.
Next year?
So it, it went down for this assessment for next year's taxes. Yep. And that was just because he combined the land. And now it's equal to, the, the land value is equal to the ten-acre pieces that his neighbors have accounting for the wetland and, and anything like that.
Move no change.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next one?
Terry Spears, nine-eight-six-zero-seven-five-two-zero-zero-zero-zero. And my recommendation would be no change.
He left.
Move no change.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the last one. Or do we do crossroads? No, we didn't do crossroads already.
The letter.
The letter. Do we need to approve that?
You do.
Yep.
Yep. So the recommendation is to drop the value from ten million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, five-hundred to ten million, four-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, seven-hundred.
I'll move.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passed unanimously. That's it, huh? So by doing that, we can adjourn this meeting. We don't have to reconvene, so.
Correct. Close and.
All right, do you have anything else from the county?
Carlo, do you have the parcel number on that letter? Okay. No, I was gonna give it to you if you didn't.
Oh, yep, it's on here.
Very good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, somebody wanna move to adjourn the Board of Equalization?
So move.
To adjourn?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned at six-thirty-four.
I'm up here somewhere. We didn't really rehearse this at all, but, you know, this is, Mayor, members of the, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to just share. It's always a privilege when I can highlight the great work that our officers do every day, really. But particularly in this, this call. And I, I can tell you from experience, the, the, the two medicals that I always dreaded going on were cardiac arrest or somebody delivering a baby. And there, there was a very stressful situations, from my experience anyway. But I just wanna recognize Officer Celeste Walls and Officer Rebecca Okerstrom. I'm gonna have Ely Deeb introduce the paramedics that were on the call. I think they're gonna give us a little bit of a, a brief story about the call. And then we have what's referred to as stork pins, which is something we award officers who are involved in a, in a delivery of this type. So I don't know that we were able to get, we were scheduled to do this last Monday and when we moved the council meeting. I think Sergeant Gross was on the call later, maybe, or part of it at some point. She couldn't be here tonight, nor could the, the mother and the, and the newborn, so. But, yeah, just wanna recognize, well, the paramedics too, and really wanna recognize Mayo Ambulance for the work that they do in assisting our city on various medical calls, probably every day, so. Ely, thank you.
Good evening and thank you for having us tonight. My name is Ely Deeb. I'm the operations supervisor over at Mayo Clinic Ambulance. I've been there for almost thirty years. One thing, we, this area, we are so lucky to have great partnership with all the police services around us. St. Cloud, Wake Park, St. Joe, you know, Sartell, Stock Rapids. So we work hand-in-hand with our officers every day. Maybe not so much me anymore, but when I was on the street, I remember, you know, going on all these calls as well. So to have calls like this, it's, it's really special and I'm glad that we can, you know, acknowledge this, so. We do have two of our paramedics that were on the call and it's Megan Merrick and James Blumentine. And they'll be able to tell you a little about the, what happened that day, so, and then we'll do the ceremony.
Hello, my name is Megan Merrick. This is James Blumentine. We, sorry. We were actually driving around Wake Park. We ended up being very close to the call. We got dispatched out at about five-oh-three PM and arrived on scene at five-oh-eight to find these two officers up in the apartment with the patient. Initially, it didn't seem like the delivery was imminent, so we were about ready to get ready to transport her when she started having another contraction, looked and the baby was crowning already. So within just a matter of five minutes, the baby was born. Baby was born at five-thirteen. So it was a very fast delivery. The officers did a great job assisting, keeping the mom calm, trying to coach her through the breathing and contractions because there, she did everything natural, no medications or anything, so she was strong. James assisted me with the baby, got the cord clamped, and we were able to get the baby to be with the mom. While we waited for another crew to help transport. But it was a lot of fun and it was exciting to see the little baby girl. It was my first delivery, so it was a lot of fun.
All right. So if you wanted to read their names and. I think that's the right one?
Yep. Yeah, this is a certificate from Mayo Clinic, Mayo Ambulance, to Officer Rebecca Okerstrom. The Golden Stark Award in recognition of outstanding service with the pre-hospital birth of a baby girl on this date, January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. And likewise, from Mayo Ambulance, Officer Celeste Walls, the Golden Stark Award in recognition of an outstanding service with a pre-hospital birth of a baby girl on the date, January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two.
All right, well, we won't read these, but it's the same. But basically, James Blumentine and Megan, congratulations. Thank you again for having us and we really appreciate everything that Wake Park does for us and supporting us. Thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, is there anyone here for public input?
Yes.
Dennis?
Dennis Schiffer, ten-eighty-two Sunwood Lane. You've heard from me before, but they tell me that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Complaining about our street, Tenth Avenue South, south of Seventh Street. You guys been patching it for ten years. And Sunwood Park Lane, same deal. That's all I got.
There you go. All right, anybody else?
When is that scheduled? I just have to hold up Mike. I'd have to pull it up and look. If you give me a minute, I can report later.
I thought it was soon, but.
But, yeah.
In the winter, it's not quite as rough, you know, the snow fills and all those holes. And you're gone, see, so you don't know when it's nice and smooth. All right, review and approve council agenda.
Yeah, what I was going to just request is, under the seasonal, is to pull the Jim Skidlaric and put it as a regular agenda item, just to change it. Unless you wanna just do it as a, just pull it out. It's easier that way, sorry.
What item number is that? I don't have.
That one would be.
B?
Did I miss it?
No, she said would be.
But is it B?
Oh, no.
That's work. A.
Oh, no wonder I missed it.
No wonder we didn't see it. It's first one.
No, that's the hiring process.
Yeah, that's hiring.
Approve hiring public, okay, yeah. So if you just wanna pull that item, then we'll just take that, that might be easier than pulling one of them out.
Wanna move to approve as amended?
So move.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passed unanimously.
The only, you, you went so fast. I was just gonna say, do you wanna add the hires from this, this afternoon?
Part of that, as I was saying.
I didn't wanna.
We can do, let's see.
Move to amend the.
Amended. You can do it under, you could do it under other, under you guys if you want.
Yeah, we can just do it under. And we don't have to amend it again. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Regular agenda.
Say, Mayor?
Yes?
If I could chime in here for Dennis so he doesn't have to stay here all night. I did look up the CIP and it's slated for, it's on the docket in our CIP plan for next year. Tenth Avenue South, Sunwood Park Lane, from Tenth Avenue to Sunwood Park Lane. And Sunwood Park Drive to, Sunwood Park Lane, so that whole area is slated for next year.
Twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three.
That squeaky wheel got greased.
Look at that. Just like that.
All right, consent agenda items. Item B, approved maintenance worker hiring process. Item C, approved purchase of two Dell laptop computers. Item D, approved trail designation. Item E, approved selling two pickups. Item F, approved the purchase of two pickups. Item G, approved resolution accepting donations to the city. Item H, approved twenty-twenty-two property casualty insurance. Item I, approved three-seven-twenty-two city council meeting minutes. Item J, approved three-twenty-one-twenty-two city council meeting minutes.
I just got a quick question on E. So if you wanna pull it or.
Just go ahead.
Let me ask. Bill, it sounds like you're trying to get now a total of four trucks from last year's that you were denied than this year's?
Yep.
So why would you wanna sell them until you have your new trucks?
I've been told by my fleet maintenance guy that he wouldn't drive them, so.
So you're, if they were sitting there, you're not gonna use them anyway?
I won't, no. He told me they're red-tagged, so they're.
Oh, all right. Enough said.
All right, somebody wanna move to approve the consent agenda from B to J?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passed unanimously. We skipped the discussion and went right to I.
Just kind of.
No discussion needed?
No, regular agenda items, position appointments.
Oh, Adrian's already two steps ahead of me. That was already on here. I didn't catch all that. So these are the.
These are the ones that we just did, so.
Yep, yep. Yep, yep.
Need a motion or whatever to approve the.
You could start with the administrative associate.
Ah, here we go, yep, I got it. That one is for the regular office position, right?
Yep.
Yep.
I'd move to hire Tracy Newgart at pay grade three, step two.
And then can you set the eligibility list to expire December 31st, 2022?
Can do that.
I think that was just added.
All right, I got a second?
Yeah.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Then I got a records technician. Yeah, records tech, police records technician.
I'll make a motion that we hire Rachel Easton. Esten.
And it's pay grade four, step one.
Okay.
And the same on the eligibility list expire December 31st, 2022?
Yep.
All right.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. And we had two police officers. Interviews, you got that one, Mike?
I'd like, for those positions, I would like to authorize the hiring process to continue. And combine these two names to our eligibility list that already exists.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, thank you. Item B, purchase and replace outdoor warning sirens. Chief?
Yes. We have a need to replace the siren. This is the one on 6th Avenue in Division. It's probably the, maybe the original, or one of the original outdoor warning sirens for the city. It's well over twenty years old. And then to replace the siren out by Belclaire Acres. That was a, kind of a temporary fix. If you recall, we bought an old siren from the city of New Ulm and retrofitted it, so we could have some coverage. The one on 6th Avenue, nor the one on Belclaire, the technology is old. And the two-way communication device that we purchased last year, that, it's not, these older sirens are not compatible, so we don't get that feedback and know for sure that they sounded like we do with the other four. So it's basically replacing our oldest sirens. Two of our oldest ones. And unfortunately, when I submitted the budget, there is, most of the funds for this is in the budget. But, and I apologize, I could not get my laptop to work. But I think it was like over thirty percent increase in price purchase from the last time. We put sirens out by Archer Daniel Midland Plant, and then the south side of Corey Park. And so I underestimated the cost increase that has come with the new sirens. So there is $30,000 in the budget for, the 2022 budget for these sirens. So to complete this, we'd need about ten. We need to dip into reserves for about $10,000 to get both of them replaced. You know, I suppose it's an option if you wanted to just do one at this time. But I would ask the council to consider allowing us to move forward with replacing both, if possible.
Well, the problem I see, and I see it here in the thing is, in the bid, it doesn't include the poles or any installation charges.
That's a little bit, well, that's correct. The estimate, it's hard to know exactly what that's going to cost. Don't know yet if they're going to have to actually replace the pole that's there. Or can we use the one that's there? It's going to depend on the condition of those poles. So that was a hard number to tack down as far as whether we need to replace the pole that they're mounted on or not. If we don't have to, the cost to wire is not that much. If we have to replace the pole, and that would be a recommendation from our electrician as to whether we need to do that or not, that could increase the cost of installation. But you're right, the cost that you saw is for the cost of the purchase of the siren itself, not installation. That would be an additional cost for that.
But that looks to be the maximum of $5,000 extra.
Yes, yep. It could be less than that.
Maximum of $5,000, it looks like, yeah, okay. Council?
I would make a motion to replace one of them, but.
Which one?
I have a problem taking money out of our reserves, so. Usually not one voting for that.
Is there? Any other funds that would be available for civil defense type expenditures through the state or county, maybe?
I see a lot of grants for various things, but for whatever reason, outdoor warning sirens does not seem to be one of those. Not sure why, but to answer your question, no, I have not seen any grants for outdoor warning siren installation or purchase.
What's the state of our reserve fund?
It's, we, I think we've only taken off for one thing so far. And so I think it's around $250,000.
We usually typically keep between about eight months of our operating expenses in there for things like, for unforeseen things, that's the intention of it.
It used to be nine, but, yeah.
I think it used to be even more than that. But I think the goal, from the auditor standpoint, was to be more at the, if the state auditor tells you that it should be six, we've always tried to do.
More?
Like, yeah, I think eight is typically what we've done.
Well, if you wanted to replace one, which is the one you would replace?
I'd probably say 6th Avenue Division. The, it's, yeah, it's the oldest one, and well, take that, the one out of Belclaire is by far the oldest, but we've retrofitted it to work. So I would say the priority would be the one on 6th Avenue.
But you have no feedback.
If I could only do one, I don't get feedback on either 6th Avenue or Belclaire. And that's, that's why I asked for two, is, because I, you know, if we have the sirens go, I need to know they're going. And we get that feedback with four of the six, but not all six. And that's, that's just from, because if, if any siren doesn't work, then we go to Plan B as far as trying to notify people to take shelter. But it's just nice having that, that two-way communication on our sirens, so we know that they sounded.
Um, well, the other thing I don't like about replacing all of one thing is, if something goes bad with one of these, or in whatever their cycle life, whether it be five or ten years, when they're up, then we're replacing them all at once again. There's no stagger to it. It's like Bill buying four pickup trucks in ten years. All four trucks need to be replaced at one time. It's a bad cycle to get yourself into it. I'd rather see things like that staggered.
For me, it's a matter of the safety element. I mean, we're warning everybody in town, we have extra sirens here, but there's nothing more out of Belclaire Acres, and they deserve to be warned at the same time.
They, they find out the same way they always did, you check.
I'm not comfortable with just.
This technology of repeating back to you isn't that new.
I just think it's a safety thing, and I'm not comfortable with just one. This one group over the other group, I think. If we need them, we should take care of both of them.
Yeah, I totally agree, it's public safety.
Yeah, I think so too.
Do you want to make a motion of one or the other?
You have a, you have a motion from Frank.
I never got a second.
I said I would.
Oh, that, okay. I need to clarify that, all right? If that isn't a specific.
Unless that's a motion, then you got to vote it down.
Didn't get a second, though, did you?
No.
Well, we didn't have a motion to get a second for.
There you go.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with the two sirens.
Second that.
Further discussion.
Again, we're spending unbudgeted money.
We're spending.
We work hard on a budget, let's follow it.
We're spending unbudgeted money, I don't disagree with that. But we have a lot, we do have more excess than we, than we should ever need, should. And in reality, the taxpayers paid that now, and these are the people that we're protecting with that money.
I guess the question on that would be then, with the money that was left over from last year, is that in this year's budget as an overage, or?
Just gets back, recalculated, Mike, and figured in, Wes, when we're doing our budgets for that year. It's not like you can.
Not rolled over.
It's not.
And if we're not going to follow a budget, we don't need to create one next year.
Well, you have, that's, oh, I don't suggest that.
Well, that's what we're doing.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Order one.
Please be noted that it's beyond the budget.
All right, item C, Anderson and Hughes video proposal.
One second, this one's me. And I can multitask sometimes, but not very good others. Some, this idea has come from myself and having some conversations with our staff. We have done some videos in the past utilizing Anderson and Hughes. I provided a couple of examples. I think some of you have already seen the Ledge video. And then we also did one for hiring as well. And one of the things that I would really like to do is continue to use more of those video things that we can do to educate the public and our residents on various things that are going on within the community. It would give us opportunities to put them on our informational channel, all of our social media sites. And so it also would give us an opportunity to do something maybe a little bit different with the State of the Cities address, if something that I kind of desired. And using some short videos, and then building off of those for other things. We've got Sales Tax Referendum coming up, it's a great way to do some reach out as well. We have a way to highlight some different things that are going on. We've got some road projects going on, and it would be a great way for us to be able to provide some additional information that way. Not everybody likes to read, some like to do some of this, so it's just another means of that. So having that conversation with Anderson and Hughes, a proposal that is before you, would be something that they would do on a monthly basis for us. So it's about $2,500 a month with an annual fee, a total of $30,000. This fits nicely in with our cable franchise fees, because it is something that we're using to educate the public, and we can use it on our broadcasting as well as our social media sites.
So the price is $30,000 if we do it for a year, not $2,500 a month plus?
No, that's right, it's $30,000 a year.
But what do, what do we get? That's a part I didn't see.
What do you mean?
How many?
You're going to get, you're going to get one a month, at least one a month.
Because it's not stated in there.
Well, that's, okay.
Okay, because that's, I don't like that.
You can't read my mind, Frank?
No.
Okay.
Because I want to know.
Yeah, we're getting twelve videos, is what we would be doing. They would be doing them on a monthly basis, so we'd be getting at least one video a month, and maybe more, depending on what we're doing.
And is that the market rate for that?
No idea.
Me either.
I know that they're the ones.
Got a lot or a little?
I know that they're the ones that did the video for this. The video, well, they were the guys doing it that night at the presentation.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I think they do a.
That's all I know about them.
There's a lot of work that I think goes into doing, to putting some of that stuff together behind the scenes. I.
Is this a local firm?
Yeah.
He's actually the individual we interviewed for the amphitheater.
Oh, the.
Coordinator. Premiered his job.
Oh, okay.
He's one of the people, let's put it that way. He's not the only person.
So what's the year span? Is it calendar, or is it from now?
When we sign the agreement.
Okay.
It comes out of cable franchise fees, so. How much is in there?
Is that in the budget?
$60,000, no.
I was going to ask that.
I don't think this is in our budget.
No, this is out of the franchise fees.
Franchise fees, that's not a budget, I don't.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, and I'm sure Frank will appreciate this.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make an emotion that we move forward with the agreement with Anderson Hughes for one year.
I'll second, just for conversation.
Wow.
Further discussion.
The only thing I like about it is it does come out of the cable franchise fees, and it might be a good communication tool.
I think there's a lot of opportunities for it, even from an economic development standpoint.
At the end, I want to have everybody's opinion of, is that worth $30,000?
I don't disagree.
Any other discussion?
Well, I kind of agree with Frank on that. I mean, we do a lot of the stuff, but we never know what we got for.
And I didn't even know about the two videos until I clicked on the links.
Well, I've, the videos, some of those videos have been shared. I sent the Ledge video, for sure, is something that you've all gotten.
It was on Facebook.
I've seen that.
Yeah.
You actually emailed me that.
That's, that is the one that we did. The other one was one that the PD used.
Any other discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Passed unanimously. All right, item D, resolution amending and terminating St. Cloud Area Joint Planning District Joint Powers Agreement.
Mayor Miller, this one is a little bit out of the norm. As probably you're all aware more than I, the area joint planning, district joint planning board put together some years ago. It's been dormant since about 2015, not too long before I came on board. In my time, I've never had an actual meeting with them. It actually came up when St. Cloud, who kind of oversees and manages the funding for it, was notified that their insurance was coming due. That kind of tripped it and said, is there really a need for this anymore? A lot of the work has either been accomplished, what it was settled to do, or it's been kind of supplanted by orderly annexation agreements. In our case, those have been fulfilled. And also kind of that ongoing work, we still get together between the cities. We still have a lot of interagency, intergovernmental cooperation. Is there really a need for that planning district, the formal board anymore? St. Cloud staff reached out to the members of the board, and everybody was, so to speak, on board with moving forward to formally terminate that. We would get a little bit of money back from the remaining funds. To give a, kind of an anecdote of, you know, how long it's been idle. One respondent said they didn't know what it was. They were the staff person for it, so. I think they, from what I'm aware, they've done good work. There was a memo that I included that St. Cloud prepared. Everybody is, all the agencies and municipalities are moving forward about the same time to do this, to present kind of a unified front, to let people know it's nothing bad. It's basically a sign that it did its purpose, and now we're kind of sunsetting it. So I'd recommend approving of those resolutions, and we can move forward with sunsetting that, with the note that we'll continue to get together once in a while, just more, on a more informal basis.
Little background on that, that started when St. Cloud Township dissolved. And the state thought we did such a good job, they actually gave surrounding areas, counties, and the cities money to jointly plan things. I think I gave you that book, Carl, I think it's a three-ring binder, about four inches thick. It's got all the paperwork in it, so to tell you that they.
She needs it every night before she goes to bed.
So for them to tell you that every city was notified, they lied through their teeth, because I was a representative on that board, and they never notified me. However, it was talked to about, for many years, it was, because we used to have monthly meetings, then we had annual, semi-annual meetings, then we had quarterly meetings, then we had annual meetings. And then, and then nobody showed up, so it's been talked about getting rid of for a long time, so.
Well, if we get rid of this under this resolution, can we transfer that $1,240 over to the siren fund? over to the siren fund?
You sure can.
I don't think you can, you know.
Well, it's all in the general fund.
Yeah.
Goes in general fund.
Yeah.
No, that can't go there.
What's your wishes?
I'll move to the joint powers resolution.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously.
As long as that fund gets into that other one.
Preliminary plat, preliminary plan unit development, Coreyview Acres.
All right, uh, I'll try to keep this short, you've seen it, a couple permutations of it already. Uh, this is only a preliminary plat at this time, usually we see prelim and final together, but for something of this scale, uh, a larger eighty-five parcel subdivision, um, more than norm to see a preliminary before a final. Uh, the final would probably end up being phased, that they don't know quite what they, how they want to configure that just yet. Uh, so, they are pursuing it, this was rezoned recently, you may recall, uh, to that R2, which allows for the townhomes, twin homes, patio homes, kind of that mixture. Uh, so this, this would be the preliminary plat of that, but it's also being pursued along with a, uh, a planned unit development component that would, um, pull the, the minimum lot sizes down a little bit from, uh, from the standard. The standard is seventy-three hundred square feet for R2. Uh, some of the, the very smaller parcels on this, uh, on the eastern boundary would be at a little over four thousand square feet, so, uh, pretty snug, but, uh, they feel that they have a, a market for those. And on the southern boundary, you'd be at just under six thousand square feet, so, a little, little below normal. Um, we've seen these concepts before at the time of rezoning, and the, the PUD plans have pretty much held the, the same to them. Um, my only, uh, quibble with it, and, uh, the planning commission shared this, uh, and we would look for this to be wrapped up with a, uh, submittal for the, the final PUD, uh, as they would come forward for that, uh, would be to address some screening along that eastern side, it's just because I've seen enough of these to know there's going to be conflict there, uh, when you have the industrial, uh, uses right there. Uh, and I know if we don't, at least to try to incorporate something, we're going to hear about it, we're going to get dragged into it one way or another, so. I'd put it on the applicants to, uh, come forth with a, both a screening plan for review and approval, uh, as well as some component plan for ongoing maintenance there, uh, to ensure that it gets taken care of, whether it's fencing or birmingham or, uh, plantings, some combination thereof, but, um, I think especially on that eastern side, uh, given the, uh, the snug lots and being right there against those industrial properties, I, I think it's important to try and do something there. Uh, people need, don't, need to be aware of what they're getting into too, I don't want to get dragged in and say, hey, there's a asphalt plant next to my house, well, it was there already about it. Um, so I'm, I'm just putting that in full front of the applicants. Uh, it's been to the, uh, county for their review regarding the, uh, uh, county road there, they don't have any major issues with it. We record that when it, when it would come forth with a final plat. Uh, we will need to address parkland dedication, but that can wait a little bit, and we would tackle that with the final plat, I know it's, um, it had at least some preliminary discussion with the park board. Um, just because the, the scope and scale of the, um, the payment, if done all at once, would be pretty big, but if it's phased, it might not be as big an issue. Um, I, so I would recommend, uh, uh, approving of the, uh, re, attached resolutions and before you um, for both the preliminary plat with the conditions outlined, as well as the, uh, preliminary, uh, planned unit development with, uh, this conditions as well. Conditions are a little bit similar in nature, just, just for reiteration in some aspects.
Council questions?
I, I have a question. Um, do they have any plans for, um, covenants or, uh, declarations or anything to govern this group?
They haven't informed us as, as such, there's not a requirement they would have to, but if they do, we need to be provided a copy for our review. Uh, I don't know that the city necessarily acts on them, but I, I think it's more of a, um, kind of a, uh, chance review and ensure that there's nothing that's blatantly illegal in them. We haven't gotten to a, uh, that point yet where, where covenants or restrictions, private restrictions have come up. We are in the works of, um, scheduling kind of a sit-down with them to, to discuss the next phases, you know, what this looks like for their, as they would move forward, because given the conditions, uh, with construction and timelines and things now, we want to get everybody on the same page and, and kind of, you know, set realistic expectations that, you know, you're not probably going to be digging in six weeks, just given materials and, you know, the timeline it takes to, uh, put specs and, and, uh, um, row details together. It's, in, in kind of a quirk, um, in working with Dave and Bill on this, I've not actually been involved with a project at seven years here that would potentially involve creating new streets, so I've had to learn this process as I go with them too. Um, so we're, we are putting that together, so we'd, we'd address that covenant question at that time with them, and if they move forward with that, um, in any case, we'd, we'd have it wrapped into the, the review with the, the final items.
Good. Any other questions?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't surprise me if they, if they did, just given kind of the market that they're, that they're looking toward, but, um, I can't guarantee it either.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolutions with all the conditions.
Let's do them separately, preliminary plat.
Oh, you want to do that first? Move to approve the preliminary plat.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously, and a, uh, motion to approve the preliminary planned unit development. Move to approve the preliminary planned unit development.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Posed.
Aye.
Passed unanimous, ah, four to one, sorry about that.
Yeah, no unanimous here.
All right, approve bills.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bills.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, bills are paid. Uh, I do have a proclamation in front of me. I got other proclamation in front of me. Whereas providing services to others is a trait to American character, and whereas our nation's mayors are increasingly turning to service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs and challenges, and whereas serving others strengthens communities, service participants serve in more than sixty thousand locations across the country, including civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations providing education, career skills, leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with both through direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the America Corps shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, strengthen communities, and joins with the National League of Cities, City of Service Day, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. Whereas the St. Cloud area volunteer coordination, coordinators join in the mission to promote community awareness of volunteer, volunteerism, and develop the profession of volunteer management. The St. Cloud area volunteer coordinators promotes National Volunteer Week throughout the greater St. Cloud area through its twenty-seven organizational members. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard E. Miller, Mayor of the City of Wake Park, do hereby proclaim the week of April eighteenth to the twenty-second as Celebrate Service Week. I think that's all I got. Was there an added on there?
No, we got it.
We got it, it was the first thing on the agenda.
Yeah, he's already on there.
Hey, Mayor and Council, um, I'd like to go back to the item we polled from the.
Oh, that's right.
The hiring process.
Yeah, you're right, thank you.
The seasonal hiring process.
Oh, that's what, yep.
That's what it was, you're right, good job.
That's what it was, Mike, there was two of them.
Yeah, we're, some of us are not with it.
Ah, that's right.
All right, Mayor and Council, um, the reason we polled this was we were looking to bring back Jim Skudaric underneath the a temporary seasonal worker, and I'm proposing to bring Jim back as a permanent part-time employee with a starting wage of seventeen fifty an hour.
All right.
And then in addition to that, hiring your temporary seasonal employees for the ledge.
Well, we.
Yeah, no, that didn't get approved, the whole item got.
Oh, the whole item got, oh, I'm, I apologize then, okay.
Did we, or did we not adjourn?
No, we have not adjourned.
Good, I'll move.
So is that, can that be combined all in one motion?
No, you can do one, do two separate.
I would do two separate if you want it, so.
What's your motion for, to hire, to make them a permanent part-time, full-time, half-time, in-between-time person?
I'll move that.
Permanent, part-time. Offered to Jim Skudaric.
I got a motion, you got a second?
All right, second.
Further discussion.
At seventeen fifty.
At seventeen fifty, got to add that on whoever made the motion.
Who made the motion?
Vic.
All right, and then?
Frank.
Frank, all right.
On favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously, now I need a motion to approve the seasonals.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously, I don't.
Thank you, Bill.
I don't have, oh, I do have something else, God, it's sitting right there. We, uh, the city, we, the City of Wake Park was awarded this trophy, this award, uh, just last Thursday. Uh, from this Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation, it's an innovation award for twenty-twenty-one to the City of Wake Park, and it has to do with us taking a piece of rock and quarry and poison ivy and making it into the ledge amphitheater, so. This is a great, a great moment for Wake Park.
Yes.
Now that's all I got.
Um, I just want to mention that next, um, Tuesday, um, which is April nineteenth, and then it would be the, the twentieth and the twenty-first. April nineteenth, it's from four to eight, the twenty-first, or the, the twentieth, excuse me, it's from eight to four, and the twenty-first from four to eight is our strategic planning, uh, session out at the Public Works Facility.
All three day, all three sessions?
Yeah, all three sessions are out there, um, it's a, going to be a great, there's a lot of great information being put together, um, on that, and and we look forward to seeing you all there.
All right, anything else, Dave? Bill, John?
No, sir.
Chief?
No.
Nothing? Dennis, are you done for the night? You got your, got your squeaky wheel greased?
I, I, I didn't know if the Long Beach Planning Committee was on the agenda tonight, but that's coming up in separate meetings.
Yep, yep.
You know, are there, are there openings for that, uh? Maybe yes.
We'll put you on the list.
Why don't you?
We'll tell you.
Don't forget, if you go to one, you got to go to all.
You can talk to Carl or Bill after, talk to Bill. He can give you all that information, and days and times and all that good stuff, so. All right, then we are adjourned at seven twenty-one.
Carl, all right.
(inaudible)